Okay, great. All right, so this is Town Council Meeting 24-25. It's Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. It's 6:05 PM. We are in Town Council Chambers at 30 Main Street in Freeport, Maine. Our first order of business is to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next, we will do roll call to see who is here. Councillor Pillsbury.
Present.
Councillor Sparda.
Here.
Councillor Brown.
Present.
Councillor Pilch.
Here.
Councillor Smith.
Present.
Councillor Benoit is here and present. Councillor Lawrence will be here later on in the evening. Our second, our third order of business is to waive reading and accept as printed the October 21st, 2025, and November 6th, 2025, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to announcements. The award for citizen, Freeport Citizen of the Year is given annually to a Freeport individual or community group that has contributed to the quality of town, the well-being of citizens, and the reputation of Freeport that has caused a measurable improvement in the circumstances of a significant number of townspeople. The name of the honored recipient or group will be permanently displayed on a plaque located in Town Hall, so that all may remember their service and contributions. The deadline for submission of candidates is December 31st, 2025. As of today, we have not received any nominations. And unfortunately, people who work for the town of Freeport are not eligible. On Saturday, December 13th, at 12:30 at Freeport Community Library, New York Times bestselling author, historian, and award-winning journalist Colin Woodard will be giving a talk about his recently published book, Nations Apart. Copies of the book will be available for sale and signing after Colin's talk. This program is free and open to the public, and it is recommended to arrive early to ensure you get a seat. Any other announcements from the council? Okay. So we'll move on to information exchange. This is a time for councillors to have discussion up here on the dais around committee meetings, updates from constituents, any other information that is deemed worth sharing. So we have two pieces of information that are on the agenda, and then we'll move forward to this general information sharing from the rest of council. So we'll start with the first one, which is an update regarding a resident request to obtain information from the main municipal employees' health trust. Just to kind of get people refreshed, this has been an ongoing conversation that was referred to the Finance Committee. We have the Chair of the Finance Committee, Councillor Pillsbury, here to report on our discussions to date.
I thought you were just gonna take it away.
I'm just gonna do it all.
So I might need some help, Sophie, in a second. But basically, the request came to take a look at the relationship between the town and the health trust in terms of potential areas for savings against our current plan. So the Finance Committee looked at it. We had figures discussions the last few meetings. We came to a number of questions, and we had the manager go and reach out to both the health trust and general council in terms of what information we could get access to and what information, what obligations we would have should we receive certain claim data and/or protected health information. And so, do you want to just give us an update as to the advice of council on that?
So what I learned is that totally stripped health information is not necessarily HIPAA protected. The issue that comes up is in such a small pool of clients, which of Freeport would be a pretty small pool. We, there are things that you can't strip out. So even when I get claims data, it's aggregated to something like lifestyle claims. And the reason for that is it's easy to deduct who might be there, even if I don't have a name or a street address or that kind of thing. The question that, the advice that we got was, where is kind of the municipal purpose in holding this data? So that's just, it's like kind of opening a can of worms. And also, if the trust was going to give us all of it, to what degree is it stripped? Could there be arguments that we're holding data that we shouldn't hold? And it all comes, all of our protections stem from us doing things that are within our scope, and our immunities and protections are all about, is it a municipal interest? So there is the argument that statewide health claim data is not a Freeport municipal interest. So I was advised that this would not be the smartest path to take.
So correct me, Joanne and Dan. So with that information, the Finance Committee considered whether or not we wanted to pursue receiving more in-depth claim data, and at the moment, we decided that it would open us up to risk and be challenging to either accept that data or find a third party and enter into some negotiation and agreement to have them receive the data, and then us to get something back that's usable but detailed enough where we weren't essentially just getting the claim data from the health trust. So in the spirit of still moving the request forward, because I think there's validity there, we decided that the course of action that we would recommend to the council would be to essentially take our policy and check it against the market. So in terms of what we're covered for and what our costs are, we'd go out and see if other brokers would price it for us and see if we're just comparative to the market and competitive and getting fair value for what we're paying. Is that aligned with everyone's recollection?
Yeah.
So I think the issues for us to discuss tonight are, does that seem like a reasonable path forward as a next step? And are there any concerns that we may or may not be addressing? Or are there any questions or thoughts as to, do we want to entertain getting more detailed claim data? What's our role in this? And give a little bit more guidance, because Dan and Joanne and I feel like we landed in a good spot after a lengthy discussion, but it's not just our decision. It's for the council to sort of give advice as to how to move forward. So that's it in a nutshell. If I missed anything, please feel free to add to it, but that's where we're at.
Yeah, I think to kind of add on to what you're saying, the conversation has been enlightening. I've learned quite a bit. And I think that if we are to sort of explore what services we get from the trust and what it would cost to get those services, not even just the policy, the health insurance policy, but those other services, what that would also cost, and if we're getting a fair value for that as well.
Yeah, just to add on to that, I think one of the enlightening points for me from the discussion was that the trust is really a vendor to the town. We have two relationships, but in this case, they're our vendor. They go out and source things that we then buy. I'm less interested in the weeds of how they go and do that, and more interested in, are they the best vendor? Are they giving us the right price? And that's what Matt is talking about in terms of comparing them in the market to see if we're getting good value from their services. And if we're not, we'll choose a different vendor. It's a little complicated, because we're also a trustee of the trust, but that doesn't give us the power to kind of dive in and take apart how they do business and direct how they do business. That's just not the role that we have as a trustee, in my opinion. So, good, valid question that I think we should pursue, like Matt said, so full agreement.
I agree with that course of action. I just want to acknowledge, I think the request, as it has come to us, has also acknowledged that as a fairly small group of employees, we're unlikely in and of ourselves to get a better value somewhere else. But I think that's, again, for us to do our own due diligence to verify that. I think the concern is that with the very large pool of all of the municipal employees that are part of the trust, the trust could be getting its own better deal. But as Dan said, our ability to push them on that, I think, is limited. And I don't know, Sophie, if you want to say anything more about that particular piece of what our limitations are, which is different than other larger state groups or larger organizations that we're a part of. We're not an owner personally.
Yeah, so I think one of the things that we had talked about at the Finance Committee is the fact that the town sits on, has representatives that sit on many different boards. Some of them are boards that people are elected to, so they kind of have a voice of the community. Others, the town has a specific ownership interest or an assessment interest in the activity. So when they go, they're sitting there representing the town of Freeport. And in this particular case, the trust, which I would just, the trust, when you talk about trustees, there is a Board of Trustees that the documents that we signed as guarantors of the trust, we have given up the right of selecting the trustees. We, the Board of Trustees establishes its own board and selects people for that board. So it's different. It's a different setup than EcoMaine, as an example, where if a community member was coming to us saying, "I want detailed information about how EcoMaine works," there's a lot of, a lot of things that are not proprietary in nature that we could dig into and get for people. This is just not that setup. We don't sit on that board as an owner of the health trust.
So I think, unless there's any other comments or thoughts, we do have our goal-setting and work-plan process in January. I saw it for myself. Sophie has a wonderful list in her office of things that have come up recently to add to the potential work-plan. This is on it, so we can have, if this seems like a good direction, we can discuss if we want to pursue that during that in January. All right, anything else? Thank you, Matt. So our next piece of information exchange is from Councillor Lawrence. He told me he might be late today, so we might move that to other business. So I do want to open up to the rest of council if there's any other information or committee updates folks would like to share. Go ahead, Councillor Smith.
Municipal Facilities Committee met yesterday. There were, was no action taken, but there was quite a lot of discussion of updates across multiple facilities, mostly from the town manager. Our plan over the next several months is to come back to the council with an overall evaluation of all of the municipal facilities, particularly those that are rental properties for the town, because I think it is in the council's best interest to sort of have eyes on the balance between what we're spending on those buildings versus what the revenue is, and to make an informed decision about our continued use of those buildings and perhaps, you know, what the long-term plan is for those buildings. So we'll be coming back with that. Also, an update on the town wharf, that the project to repair the town wharf has been broken into two pieces to try to ensure that the majority of it gets done before the next high-use season next summer. So that is primarily about redoing the decking and the hoist and not necessarily getting the new Harbor Masters building up yet, that that would come later on, and that that's going to Coastal Waters for approval in December. Also, just a quick update on the Village Corridor Initiative. We had a leadership meeting yesterday where Councillor Pilch was also present. Really sort of updating, looking at timeline, the timeline of that project has been extended about as much as it can be to give us some more opportunity to think and plan about demonstrations next summer before we get to a final proposal for that Route 1 corridor. The proposals that are currently being investigated are both a revised pilot for the Bow and Main intersection, also the School Elm and Main intersection, and potentially the Mallet Drive Main intersection. So there was a lot of discussion about what we would need in terms of renderings to adequately, I think, evaluate that in its own process as it comes to the council and goes to DOT, but also how we could best use visuals to advertise that and those trials well in advance to the public. So that went to Complete Streets again this morning, and there was a plan to increase the budget slightly to allow for more full renderings of some of those intersections. But those will be coming to council once they're done. There was also a fair amount of discussion about the railroad bridge. I won't go into a lot of detail about that, because the official timeline from MDOT about when that might actually be reconstructed is no idea. So there is still a lot going on with that, but they do have a deadline, internal deadline of presenting a design for the new railroad crossing bridge by December 31st. So I think we can expect there to be the next round of public engagement with that design early in the new year. Anything you want to add, Dan?
I think that covers it. The one point I want to make just on that last piece is that they're pushing to get a design out the door by the end of the year. It's not the final design that they'll use to turn around and start construction in January. The construction is still many years away, or probably years away. And there is ample time for public input, modifications, if we need to make them.
Any other information to share?
I will just add that our brand-new fire truck was outside today. I hope everyone got to see it. It's very exciting. I will say that the chief shared with me that if we had purchased the same truck today, it would be around $300,000 more. So we did a good job doing that quickly, so. But it should be out for calls, I believe he said, in two weeks or so.
Yeah, I just want to say, in order for us to run the truck, everybody has to have training, and the Department of Labor does require a significant amount of driver training, because you're not required to have a commercial driver's license to drive a truck, but we need to be able to document that you know what you're doing when you drive the truck.
It also sounds like dispatch. There's a, some details with dispatch as well that were interesting to hear about. All right. So with that, we will turn it over to Sophie for the manager's report.
So it's kind of busy at Town Hall. Yesterday, we had lots of people coming in to personally pay their taxes on the last day, so I was really, it was really nice to touch base with lots of smiling folks, which was kind of cool. I'm not even, I'm being totally serious, lots of smiling folks.
And dogs.
Lots of dogs, yes. I also just want to let you know, in case you get any calls or feedback from community members, that under state law, there is a specific lien procedure if people don't pay their taxes. And we are in the kind of countdown towards the automatic foreclosure on liens. So in an effort to help people not incur more expense, there's a postcard going out this week to folks who have not yet paid their property taxes from 18 months ago, almost 18 months ago. And asking them or letting them know that if they don't pay, there is going to be a formal notice that comes that we have to send by state law, and that adds money, more money. It is, I guess, good to announce that it's, we're talking about 29 total tax accounts. 11 of them are held by one business. So it's a relatively small number of people. And Jessica and Becky continue to make calls and try to figure out how we can work with folks on that. I do need a little bit of guidance from staff, from council. We received notice from Main Department of Transportation that the construction project for the multi-use path on Mallet Drive from the bridge down to Main Street had been slated for construction in 2027. It is, it got pushed back, and part of it, it's budgetary, so they had to go through and score projects. This is a plan where it's a $3.4 million project. The town would be required to expend 20% or $680,000. But we scored lower, because we don't yet have a formal connectivity plan for the west side of the interstate. So when, as I understand, it happened before I got here, but when the conversations happened about adding the multi, the larger path on the bridge, the thought was, this is a 50-year bridge, we might not be ready for it today, but we're working towards that. And so the first step of working towards that was kind of getting the design and then hopefully the construction for the first part of the first leg down to Main Street. And we do have, on the 2050 plan and in our own capital plan, the, looking for funds available to do the formal planning for what happens when you get to the other side of the bridge. We know that where the Powell Road and 12536 come together, that's just not good. There is no technical word for that, it's just not good. And so I think what Earl and I and Brett will do is look at all of those plans to try to get that formal planning done in the 2027, so that they will see it underway and at least draft iteration, because they would be part of that. And we should score better and be in good shape for FY '28. My question for you is, I wasn't here before, we do have some money programmed. Are you all set for me to commit to the match? Does that go, what process do you, do we use for that? It's $680,000. I don't tend to be able to just do it on my signature. Has that?
There is, there is some money in the capital budget for that, but it is not that much. Is that right?
No.
Do you know how much it is?
Give me just a minute to poke. Can't find it pretty quickly.
But are you asking if we have a process that we've been using in the past?
I'm more, I'm more interested, I could not find a process. I've seen lots of, of town projects, but does it go to Complete Streets? It's been at Complete Streets, so do they, do they make the formal recommend, like?
I don't think there is a process. I mean, I think that's, that's clear, because if you don't know it, I don't think we know it.
Unless Dan knows it.
Does Dan know? No.
So I would think that it would go to Complete Streets, and they would bring it to us in the, in the same way that they have brought the multimodal path on Route 1 South to us quite a few times to look at, which is how we got it in, as a placeholder in the capital plan, although that is, that has been planned, but it's far from a shovel-ready plan. I also think we got, when you're saying that there's money set aside, you're saying that there's money set aside for the planning, but not for our share of the construction.
So, yeah, there was an agreement already in place and underway for the planning that had been executed before I got here. It was one of the first things that we looked at. I'm just looking ahead in the...
Because for the multimodal path on Route 1 South, that was done through a grant, the planning was done through a grant. And I'm just wondering if that would be something we could pursue on the planning side, but you're looking for the construction money, which is a whole other piece.
Yes.
I have a question, because the fact that we want a path there, I feel like is already settled, right?
Absolutely.
So we know that. We don't yet have it designed, so we don't know what it's going to look like yet. So DOT is asking us to commit construction funds for something that we'll figure out later what it looks like.
So I think the commitment isn't necessarily to sign, I'm not signing an agreement. If it were simply signing an agreement, I would, it would come with plans and we would be set to go. This is, in order for me to hold the 2028, I need to send them something in writing saying that we understand it's been moved to 2028, and we will hold funding for that.
Hold.
Budget.
The match, the match funding.
Budget.
So, and just to clarify too, that we're, we're kind of talking about both two different costs, but also two different sides of the bridge.
Yes.
So one is, there's planning money for the west side that we've put in the capital budget to plan that west-side connectivity.
Yeah, that's...
But this is for the construction on the east side from the bridge to Main Street.
And, and...
And we, we don't have that budgeted, but we essentially need to say that we are going to budget it.
So essentially, we would have to be saying that we understand, and it's going to be about $700,000, and we're okay with budgeting that.
And we intend to put it in our plan.
So it sounds like, we, we say it's a priority, and that means Earl puts it in his budget that we will review next year.
Yes.
And that's all you need is, it's going in the budget, can confirm.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's all I need. I'm not signing an agreement. It's an email back, it's, but it's an email I'm not comfortable sending unless you're either telling me there's a process to go through to get approval for that, or you're telling me you're fine with me sending that email back.
Have you talked to Jessica at all?
Yep, that's why I'm here.
Okay. She, she doesn't know a process either?
Not really, no.
Okay. Are folks comfortable?
What do we currently have budgeted? That's what you're looking at right now.
I'm looking it up right now.
Let's find out what the delta is, and then I'll tell you if I'm comfortable.
Well, and I think, you want to make sure your mic's on, Ken. I think that's the other thing, is that what we budgeted is for the planning, but not for the construction. So I think, are you asking, can we take what's in the capital budget for the planning and use it for the construction and find the planning money later?
I would like to know what we have in the budget now versus what we're not committing to by sending an email, but we're kind of committing.
Because I, I think at the moment, for the construction, what I'm hearing is, we don't have anything in the budget.
So what we have in the budget right now is, in 2027, $150,000, and that is the match for the design work and the property acquisition, the first phase, the, what do they call it? Design and PE, does that?
And so is that for the east side or the west side?
That's for the east side.
It is, okay.
Yep. And we have $500,000 in future years for reconstruction of Mallet Drive, which is not that. And that is... And that is...
So, this is matched for the construction?
Yep.
That we knew we'd be having to pay for?
Yes.
So, we hadn't put that in before?
Because we hadn't gotten any budget is my, I think at this point we were looking at the feasibility of the, the trail, the multi-use path. I also, when I look at this budget from last year, the long-term plan from last year, I, I see already things that we have like gateway and corridor planning, which we're currently doing, but I see some things that have already been moved around. The biggest one is we have $915,000 that has been programmed for the corridor. And that's $305,000 a year for the next three years, starting this year. So, next year, we'd have six and then we'd have 915. So, I...
Could that go towards?
I mean, it all, we have kind of approached in our PPI, I'm looking for Brett, we've kind of approached in the PPI, the gateways at both of the exit ramps, entrance ramps to 295 and then the corridor from Upper Mass down to Main Beer. So, I feel like, number one, I feel like this is kind of going to get flipped on its ear based on some of the other planning that we've done. And also, for example, Pine Street isn't currently in this plan. However, it has been identified by GP Cog as a need. We've secured almost $700,000 of match for that over the next three years to do it as a phase study. So, Earl has kind of taken this and we've put the whole plan on its ear for next year for you. I don't know how to, we've... Yes. Dan is, Dan is looking pained.
Councilor Brown?
I'm always reluctant to spend money when I don't have a plan. And my bicycle riding on that side of the highway informs me somewhat that the roads are sort of dangerous. And so, I would need to see more information about how this might be developed in ways that would lead this project to not be a bridge to nowhere.
So, I understand what you're saying a hundred percent. I also understand that we have added elements into our capital plan just in the two years that I have been here, that we are seeing evolve as time goes on. We also are changing some of, before I came, elements of the capital plan were kind of hodgepodge. Now, we have created a center and we're trying to move out from that center so that we build connectivity. We are also looking to try to get to a preservation of pavement mode, which is much less expensive than a full reconstruction. Although it is never ideal to go chasing money when DOT or GP Cog is telling us that they'll put $700,000 on the table to reconstruct a street that we know needs to be reconstructed and to possibly get a safer bike lane on Pine Street because their surveys are showing them that it is one of the most heavily trafficked, see? So, when you think about our capital infrastructure budget, it can only withstand so much money every year. And you are going to see things shift in that based on priorities and based on where Earl and his, our team, I would put, there are many more people, some of them are sitting in this, where they're able to secure funding and not have local tax dollars go in. So, I understand where you're coming from. Where I'm coming from is, before I ever got here, there was a request to design a multi-use path. That design is in the process, in process. We've got funding through GP Cog for part of it and DOT is paying a good chunk of it. And we're on the hook for about $150,000 for that design work that's happening. Design and it's more than just design, they have to do some right-of-way acquisition with that money. So, if you know you want a trail there, it's right on today's dollars, it's $3.4 million to construct that path. We have the ability to have the state pay eighty percent of that. If we're not in a place where we're willing to say, moving forward, that $700,000 is going to be important. And understand if it's funded for construction in '28, it's not going to be constructed in '28. It, it sits for a little bit of time. So, I think it is, I'm, I never want you to make decisions that you don't feel like you have enough money, enough information to make. But on the other hand, we are completely changing on a dime our approach to our capital road and infrastructure planning. And we've seen that we started that in an effort to get the grant funding to support that change. And we have to wait until we see where that shuffles. And based on that shuffle, you're going to see this plan shuffle. When you look at the plan, we consistently spend between $850,000 and $1 million a year on our roads, consistently. What that means is, if you want to do this, it means that we shuffle other things out or we find grant funding to help offset costs. It, it, it is a, it is a balance. The budget is the budget, which is that $800,000 to $1 million a year, 850, yes.
I just want to clarify that. Our capital plan is a plan. It is not setting money aside, saying we will promise to spend this money this year. It's looking out five years into the future, what are things that we're likely to spend money on so we know how much money we need to start saving to meet those needs? So, there's a lot of stuff in there where we don't have a plan, a design, this is where every dollar is going. It's just a, this is our savings account, we'll figure it out a little bit later. So, if we're doing planning and some design work for a multi-use path, there's a pretty good likelihood we're going to want it constructed at some point. So, we should think about setting aside some money, even if we don't know exactly what that's going to look like yet. I'm sure when we get to the planning stage, we will see plans and get a chance to have our say about how much we love them or not. But more than likely, we will need to spend some amount of money and $680,000 is the current placeholder. Not having the designs, but since they do this kind of thing a lot, they said it's probably going to be about this much. So, that's all they're asking for now is, are you willing to think about setting aside the money in future years? Is that right?
Yes, that we are on the hook for the money, absolutely, when we sign the actual contract.
Today.
Which is not today. But, again, I just don't want to obligate, even for planning, without at least having...
What would be the consequences, just to kind of walk through the scenario, if we say we have it and then we're like, never mind, we don't?
So, if we say we have it for FY '28 and we say that in May or June of FY '26, not a lot because they're gonna, they're, it's kind of on the shelf at this point and they can shuffle around that. If we waited until they formalized their FY '28 plan, so this time next year, it probably would, but, and it would be relationship. It wouldn't be financial, it would be, does the, right now, the Town of Freeport's relationship with MDOT is when we come to the table, we do what we say we're going to do. And I think that would still be the case moving forward. I think the key is making our decisions in a way that allow them to make their fiscal year decisions.
I think my primary concern at this point is we've already lost a year and I don't want to lose another year. And I, I also want to clarify that the, there is a, when we say we don't have a west side connectivity plan, I think we don't have a plan to the point that MDOT would consider it planned. We have a goal.
We do.
Of making the Desert Road to Hunter Road loop around to the Powell Road. I mean, that's very well documented within Complete Streets' planning, but it has not been planned out in a way that would be accepted by DOT. So, at this point, that's still an issue that we have to address and we have planning money for that. But I think even though that is a big chunk of a million-dollar annual road budget to be saying is just going to be for this path that's less than a mile long, I, I think, to Sophie's point, if we're going to get the state to pay for eighty percent of it, we need to be ready to say that we're going to put up that twenty percent.
What does, not having a documented plan for the west side connectivity, if we did have one, what would that get us?
It gets us, that connection, even if it's not all the way through Hunter Road and fully fleshed out, getting those bikes to a trail, which there is a trail on the other side, across country, kind of, or, there's a trail over there. When they have to check a box, that'll, that is what calculates your score, it says that it's not just to nowhere. So, right now, you go to the bridge and it really is not safe to go from the bridge to the other side.
But does it get us priority, construction work? Does it get us more money? Does it, what is it?
It doesn't get us more money, the twenty percent is as low as we would look to go with this type of funding. It would get us more points to prioritize the project over other projects that could get built. So, this is part of the 2050 work that Brett and Caroline did with Earl. We do, that is part of our ongoing effort is to begin that design work. So, what they're looking for is a plan, meaning you roll it out and there's a goal and it's on our capital plan in future, relatively soon future years, after this one gets built or when this one is being built.
Right, and I will say from sitting on PAC's policy board, it's getting hard, it's getting more narrow, more and more narrow how much money they're giving out for these kinds of projects and it's getting more competitive. So, I am just putting that out there as information. So, say we push back another year, that'd be at least another year.
So, how, how much more clarity do you think you can get if you and staff go back and look at the capital budget in terms of what's in, not only for road maintenance? I mean, do you think you can sort of sharpen the pencil and, and get us to, I think we've got X percent of it covered in the next couple of years?
So, I will tell you right now that Earl currently is working on the capital plan for the infrastructure side, the Conference of Infrastructure. And he's looking at ways to leverage tax increment finance dollars that might be available for infrastructure improvements in the village area that otherwise have been funded through the general fund. You know, there, he has some things that he's doing here. I don't think it would take a lot of time to be able to reformulate this. He normally would have something to Jessica. I think it's January 15th is when this is due to finance anyway.
When do you have to send that, that letter of indication?
I can let Joe know that we're, we're relatively interested, but in order to get a written assurance, I need to do a little bit more legwork, that's...
I mean, you mentioned that we would need to, in good faith negotiating, May slash June of this upcoming year is when we would need to tell them yea or nay. Is there harm in saying, yes, this is a priority for us and we believe that we are working toward that? We're working on our capital budget and our fiscal '27 budget and we'll know by what?
No problem at all with that. I think, I think you probably, if you remember, you have your public hearing on the capital plan is before, it's like the same day that we dropped the budget, so end of April, beginning of May. So, we would have it then. I don't have any issue doing that, I just want to make sure that I am speaking what council is willing to support. And I don't want to leave this conversation with people thinking that like, our planning on infrastructure is just willy-nilly because in actuality, what confuses it is we had a plan that we have shifted the approach to take advantage of grant dollars and it just, we're in that imply, we're, we're having to flip things around.
So, what I'm hearing is it's a priority, we want to make it work, just want to have a little bit more information.
I can absolutely communicate with Joe and tell him that we need a little bit more time.
But that it's...
Yep.
We don't want to see it happen.
And I'll also communicate that the west side planning is on the horizon for us and we should have something coming up anyway. Okay. That was my, I feel like I've taken more than enough time, so.
Did, on the, do you have more of the manager's report? Or is that it? And if you weren't going to talk about it, can you talk about the branding?
Oh, sure. So, staff met this week, we actually invited Councilor Pilch to join us with Jay Paulus, who is our consultant for this work. I have, I've been really impressed, so Jay went out and has done, Jay and his staff have done many interviews of stakeholders around the, kind of, what their vision of Freeport is, what Freeport means. And had a lot of data last time we met about kind of what are the things? And so, you heard some of the things we would always hear. It's, what was interesting to me was more of the sense of community and integrity and trust and some around our water and our coastline. And from that, he continues some stakeholder meetings even now. But this week, when we met, he rolled out some black and white. We're not yet trusted with color, we need to, we need to look at some black and white images. And we gave him feedback, my favorite feedback was, Jay, I really, that one speaks to me, but I don't like the graphic and I don't like the font. And everybody at the table looked and said, what do you like? And I'm like, I don't know, I, I like it, I just don't like it. So, we're still in that kind of giving feedback. I think, Jay, are we looking in a couple of months of being able to come back to council? I think that's the, I think the group is going to meet one more time and then it will come back to council for kind of a check-in to show you where we think we're kind of landing. It has been very open, free, free exchange, free flow of ideas. And I've been happy, as he's talked about the interviews he's done and talking with stakeholder groups, that there's been some from the business community, some visitors and some residents, so it's a nice mix. Is that what you're looking for? Okay.
I look forward to seeing the designs, I'm very excited. Anything else? You sure? Okay. Any other questions for Sophie? Okay, then we will move on to our public comment period.
Do you want to go back to Councilor Lawrence's area?
Thank you.
Oh, that's really good.
Now that we have Councilor Lawrence, we'll actually backtrack a second to information sharing. We had the public comment policy and the use of public property policy on our last agenda. We ran it a time, so it went to the ordinance committee. So, Councilor Lawrence will give us an update on that conversation.
Okay.
Okay. We engaged a lot of discussion about it. Okay, we'll start over again. We had a lot of discussion about this. We have, you know, town-owned property, public assembly and events. Staff reported the town must uphold First Amendment protections, which we all knew, while ensuring public health, safety and welfare. Regulations governing public use of town-owned property must remain content neutral and focus on time, place and manner rather than viewpoint or message. Traditional public spaces such as parks and sidewalks generally allow expressive activities well limited to public assembly areas, which could include designation of all or portions of municipal buildings and adjacent grounds, may be designated as non-public forums with reasonable restrictions consistent with their intended purpose. The town also retains the right to engage in government speech such as official messaging or hosting, sponsoring specific events without creating a public forum. Permissory organizations' events may be required based on objective factors such as anticipated attendance, amplified sound or use of structures. To manage safety, liability and management and emergency access, written guidelines need to be clearly defined space types, permit thresholds and timelines for applications and approval. And include provisions for insurance indemnification to ensure fairness, transparency and legal compliance. So the staff is going to draft a general town property use policy language that distinguishes between casual public use from organized, from organized events, designate town-owned properties, areas, types as either, either a place of public assembly or not, and incorporates permitted approval requirements, safety standards for place of public assembly. Committee members are asked to consider where it would be, would like to allow or limit public assemblies for the next discussion. So basically we have to be fair, honest and clear about where these things are. And we need an ordinance to do, a policy to do that.
And that was official guidance from our council, correct?
Yeah, that was based on a conversation with Amy Chow, the town attorney. And also she sent me into some very good resources. The, the piece that is important, there are some things that are very clear, like Memorial Park is a place of public assembly. Sidewalks, as long as that assembly is not impeding our, the use of the sidewalk, which we have an ordinance that governs, it is generally held as a place of public assembly. I think people would all agree that the town manager's office is probably not a place of public assembly where people can just come in and use at their will. But the community room at the library, you can rent that and you can use that. And we do not make those decisions based on the message that you're going to give or the content of your discussion. So when I look at that, the places, it's easy for me to draft many of our public areas. And to also say, for example, we have leased the Soul Street School, Soul School, not Soul Street, but Soul School. Therefore, because it's leased to a private entity, it is not on the menu for being a place of public assembly. The place that I think we want to talk about a little bit is going to be out front here. We're putting in an area and that we can have events. So the question that the committee is really gonna, I'm going to ask the committee to grapple with on Thursday is, are you, do you want to control what is there? And so if we want to control what is there, it's not a place of public assembly, which means you cannot take applications for people to use the space. That space would be things that the town sponsors, things that the town is doing. So it limits the use of the space and the committee is going to have to decide whether or not they want to put that limitation. Without that limitation, the council would have no control over what could be put within a, you know, a photograph that would show Town Hall. So you just have to think about what the priorities are. And the other place that I think we want to talk with Winslow Park Commission, just you've got the place that people can rent for the, for activity. But most definitely, we're not going to say the public can generally use campsites because people are renting those campsites and they're for a specific purpose that is not gathering for public discussion or events. Is that?
Just have a question about, and I understand the point about Town Hall is if you're taking applications from the public, then you can't, can't manage what the content is. Where we have been hosting events that are not directly town-related, such as art installations, can we, if we were to say this is not a place of public assembly, but we are inviting groups to use it? We're inviting something to happen? Because I think if we have just invested all of this money to create this gathering place, but you can't do any organized programming there over the weekends or things like that, I think that would be a loss to the community as well.
So this is why we want to have a conversation. The key comes in defining what the space is. So if you use something like the Fall Festival, if the town were sponsoring the Fall Festival and saying, we want to participate in the Fall Festival and here is what, how we want to participate, then you're not leaving it for the public to come in. I guess that's the, the key. So if we were going to go back to the Pinkies, if we were coming to you saying, you know, you're looking, we really wanted to put something out there and we really think this Pinkies thing is the thing that you should put out there. And here is how, based on everything else we see that the town is doing, it meshes with that. Does the town want to sponsor the Pinkies being there? That is different than there's an application period and anybody can put whatever they want out there. Because if it comes at you, then you have to let everything come at you. If you're making decisions, it can be whatever you want, as long as it doesn't violate the Maine Human Rights Act.
And so that, along with the public comment policy will be discussed?
Yeah, we, we moved the meeting. All the material is online and I think councilors all got a copy of the agenda and material. On that agenda, there's a draft public policy, public comment, and that's to reflect your current rules of procedure, which the council chair and I both agree should probably be on the council goals to revise because there's some really outdated stuff in there. But it took your current rules of procedure, the new statute that requires public comment, you to allow public comment and guidance that Maine Municipal Association gave us about public comment, meeting, control and ensuring First Amendment rights. So I'm not saying it's perfect. It's a place for people to start and we can work from there. And then the other thing, FSAB had sent an ordinance around public trees, wanting to get designation as a Tree City was important as part of their planning and I think part of the Climate Action Plan that we adopted. I took what they had done, which legal review had some concerns with some of the stuff that was included in there, just that it's a little bit more than municipal review, what, what you would expect municipalities to do with public trees. It kind of, it, it went into some more detail than we normally would do. So I took that, their draft, guidance from the town attorney and some other ordinances that the attorney had suggested to us and create, created a draft that I hope is a simplified version that at least starts a public tree program, which we need for the Tree City USA designation, while maintaining the same setup that we currently use for managing public trees, with a little oversight, but development of a management plan.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right. And with that, we will now move on to the public comment period. For folks who are here, this is for items that are not on the agenda, but things listed under information exchange can still be spoken about. We just asked you to introduce yourself. You keep it to three minutes and that's, that's it?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Freund and I reside at 38 Cheehawke Road in Freeport. A number of statements were made tonight as a result of the Finance Committee's meeting and I would like to clarify a few points. Number one, I appreciate the fact that previously the manager said that I perhaps have more knowledge in this field than she and the council often refers to her. So I have invited everyone to a conversation. No one has taken me up on that, but I really would appreciate it if people would call and ask me about their questions. Number, number two, I have repeated that it is not the best use of the council's time to go out and try to separate Freeport and go shop separately. That is an error. The issue is not whether or not that Freeport should leave the trust. The issue is the management of the medical insurance in the trust and should not be conflated with other services of the trust. That is the one specific issue. Number three, it is imperative that you get all of the claim data. If outside council is saying that that is beyond the purview, you should get that in writing. Because if you think that the rates that Freeport pays is because of the few people that are in Freeport, that is not the case. It is the thousands of people all put together. The actual experience of just Freeport is actually immaterial, okay, or nearly immaterial. It's infinitesimal, okay? Number four, I have suggested that the data would not, there's not a danger of HIPAA here in any way because the information is held by the trust. The information could be delivered to a responsible party. That party is endorsed by the Healthcare Purchasing Alliance of Maine, so they have excellent credentials. Number five, I read the report, which shows that the administrative cost is in the neighborhood of $7.5 million. Section 504 of the trust says that there is an opportunity to investigate. Such reports should be kept on, the trustees should make a written report of their operations during the preceding year showing receipts, disbursements and earnings. Such reports should be kept on file at the trust at all times and shall be subject to inspection by any member at any reasonable time. So if you want to know why Maine Municipal gets 3.8 million, Anthem gets 2.7 million, et cetera, et cetera, I think these are worthy questions that should be asked. Number six, I would suggest, as I said before, that every correspondence with outside council be in writing so that there's not subject to misinterpretation. Number seven, I sent a bunch of material. I hope people read it. I really do invite people to have a conversation with me. Number eight, and in conclusion, what I am suggesting represents zero risk to the town. Zero risk and no cost, but the opportunity to save hundreds of thousands of dollars. Thank you very much.
I do just want to, one thing I want to clarify, thank you, Daniel, is that we have put this through the Finance Committee. So you, I want to be clear that council has paid attention. We have spoken to you. So I take a little bit of an issue when you say no one's talked to you about this. We've, we've put it through Finance Committee. So this has been discussed through that process.
You, you are misquoting what I just said, ma'am.
Okay. We can talk another time then. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mason Morfitt. I live in District Three. And I hope you'll indulge, indulge me with four minutes of your time. I'm not here tonight to ask for money, as my past appearances may have led you to fear. I'm here to try to raise our spirits at a time when we're worried or should be about climate change, the next pandemic, nuclear war, super intelligent AI, et cetera. I'm here to propose that we name the Osprey the official town bird of Freeport. No one seems to know how many Osprey we have in Freeport, but there are several, including one right in front of my house on the Harris Seagun River. This nest is on an artificial platform that I installed in 2009. One or two chicks have been hatched in it virtually every year in the 16 years since. I should assure the council that I installed the nest only after a full year-long process of securing permits from the town of Freeport, after review by the Harbor Master, the Sewer District, the Shellfish Commission and a mandated poll of my neighbors on Brigantine Cove, the State of Maine, the US Corps of Engineers and the US Coast Guard. The Corps of Engineers was involved because the rock on which the nest is located on a three-inch diameter stainless steel pole is a few inches underwater at high tide. The Coast Guard was involved because they're concerned about unauthorized private aids to navigation. When I called the Coast Guard in Boston and explained the situation, the guy who answered the phone said, tell you what you're going to do. You don't put a number on it. You don't put a light on it. You don't paint it red. You don't paint it green and you don't call back. I wanted to nominate the guy for one of those awards for outstanding civil servants, but I was afraid he'd lose his job. But why among all the birds that nest in Freeport, the Osprey? Well, we almost eliminated the Osprey around the second half of the last century by poisoning them with DDT, which caused them to lay eggs with two thin shells, which then broke and killed the embryonic chicks. In other words, humanity created a problem, figured it out, made, figured out that it had made a serious mistake and fixed it when the Environmental Protection Agency effectively banned the use of DDT. Today, as mentioned above, we're faced with globally existential man-made threats such as climate change, global pandemics, nuclear war, et cetera. However, we fully acknowledge the, if we fully, if we fully acknowledge these threats, we may find a way to fix them. The Osprey is a manifestation of the mythical phoenix bird, which rose from the ashes of its own nest after a fiery self-immolation. It's an appropriate symbol of these efforts. At the strictly local level, we're fortunate in Freeport not to have any existential threats, although we have plenty of serious problems, for example, housing, food insecurity and the stubborn and persistent decline of our town center. But we also have a downtown vision plan, which hopefully will rejuvenate our downtown area and cause it to rise phoenix-like to a vibrant center of economic and community activity. With imagination persistence, we can, to coin a phrase, make Freeport great again. The Osprey would appear to be an appropriate symbol of this effort. The black-capped chickadee was designated Maine's official bird in 1927, but there's only one town in the state that has an official town bird, Scarborough, which chose the piping plover for this federal and state endangered species. The late philosopher Vince Lombardi once said, there is no room for second place. However, I believe there's plenty of room for Freeport to take an action that is symbolically appropriate, non-controversial, hopefully inspiring and perhaps most important to the town council, doesn't cost the taxpayers a dime. I should perhaps emphasize that the Osprey and the Falcon, Freeport High School's mascot, are taxonomically in different families. In effect, they play in different leagues, so there's no competition. Thank you for your consideration. You may be pleased to know that like the Osprey, I migrate south through the winter, so you won't be seeing me around for a while.
Do you have that typed up? Can you send that to us? Love to have that. Thank you very much.
The town I go to in Florida in the, in the wintertime, the official town motto is keep Gulfport weird.
Mason, I just want to thank you for, for bringing that up as a proposal because in the past, the Osprey has been an acknowledged part of Freeport iconography. in the past, the Osprey has been an acknowledged part of Freeport iconography, because it was the mascot of Moore Street School, and so it was the balance of the high school Falcon and the Moore Street Ospreys. Just looking, it looks like that has since been replaced with a moose at Moore Street and, and a ship at Mass Landing, and of course, the middle school is, is again, the Falcons. So it would be nice to have that recognized, and their presence here on the Harris Seagull get recognized in some way.
Call for a vote.
Since you're leaving, Mason, I think the chair is serious. It would be great if you could send us your remarks from tonight so that we can have them in the record. Thank you.
And maybe we'll see this on a future agenda for a vote. Thank you. I'll let you know, Mason.
Sounds like a special projects committee.
Or we can refer to special, special projects. Safe travels, Mason. Any other comments? All right, so we will close the public comment period, moving on to our new business, item 141-25. This is our consent agenda. Basically, we are looking at some appointments and reappointments, confirming our council leadership and a small donation to the library. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be ordered?
Be it ordered that the November 18th, 2025 consent agenda be adopted.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the items? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to item 142-25, this is a public hearing for the extension of one of our TIFs, the Desert Road Business and Industrial Downtown Tax Increment Finance District. Before we open the public hearing, we'll just have Brett do a little bit of introduction.
Thanks, Counselor Benoit. Brett Richardson, Development Director for the town of Freeport. If you heard the name that Joanna just read out for the name of the TIF, it's quite a clunky name, the Third Amendment to Phase Two, to a couple of names that aren't relevant to what we're talking about tonight. So going forward, we're going to refer to this TIF as the Village Corridor TIF, and the reason why is because this move tonight will extend two expiring TIF districts that were established in 1996, that have generated revenues for the town over the course of almost 30 years, supported great projects, but are about to expire. And so we have the opportunity to renew those TIFs for an additional 20 years and to amend the development program so that we can invest in the priorities and the needs that we have today. Those include the priorities that we've reached consensus on the downtown vision, the Climate Action Plan, the Transit-Oriented Development Dog Bone Plan, and the comp plan that was just endorsed. And so it's a great opportunity for the town. To be clear, this move will maintain the financial status quo for residents. It won't impact the taxes that residents pay, but it will generate about $17 million to invest in public priorities, like multi-use trails along Mallard Drive. It allows prior district obligations to expire, so some of the revenues that used to go for development will now go to the public, public coffer for public use. It extends the tax benefits that the town accrues by avoiding county and state taxes on the value, and it also maximizes the flexibility for the Town Council going forward to invest in a variety of programs, infrastructure, that meets the community's needs. So it's really a good, it's a great program. We've worked on it for almost a year now. It's been vetted through a number of partners and stakeholders. Most recently, the Freeport Economic Development Corporation endorsed it about a week ago, which is part of the Town TIF policy. So we're asking for Town endorsement approval tonight to send this up to the state, get it approved, and the ability to fulfill a 2025 Town Council goal.
Any questions for Brett? Great. Thank you for your work on this. We've talked about this a few times. I will just make a note that we will go from the public hearing right into our be ordered motion to send this amendment to DECD, correct?
Yep.
Yep. All right, so with that, do I have to make a motion? I was going to say. With that?
We already said we're going to, that's public hearing, but you don't even do the motion.
Right, yeah, I suppose it's asking. So with that, I will open the public hearing. So if anyone would like to speak about this, they are welcome to the podium. Just introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Lynn Schaefer. I live at 19 Hiveview Road in Freeport. I'm president of the Board of Directors of Meeting House Arts. Meeting House Arts is most interested in the opportunity that extending the downtown TIF, as well as any upcoming new TIF applications, lends to support of an arts, cultural, and historic district in our downtown. The economic impacts represented by the arts in local communities are well documented, both in the U.S. and in the State of Maine, even in downtown Freeport. We know we need to find ways to draw people to our downtown and then for them to stay in order to benefit our downtown businesses, hotels, restaurants, retailers, et cetera. From the 2018 Freeport Cultural Plan to the 2022 Downtown Visioning Plan to the recent Comprehensive Plan, these planning projects completed and approved by you have all strongly recommended that Freeport take advantage of the deep resources found in the arts. For now, it's my intention to bring this to your attention, attention, as you plan the months and years ahead, activating the various plans we already have in place. We highly recommend that you and the town undertake bringing more support to a downtown arts and historical resource for our community. Meeting House Arts stands ready to support you in this endeavor. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Anybody else who would like to speak? I also, I see Mary Davis in the room, so.
Hello, Mary Davis, President of the Freeport Economic Development Court Board. I just want to say thank you. I think this is such an exciting opportunity for us, that we're taking the time and attention to make sure that we have monies, that not only the council now, but the council many years from now, has funds to be able to do some of the things that the residents so want, and it just gives us the flexibility to be able to do that. So cheers to Brett and all the hard work. We would not be here without all the work that he's put into this. FEDC strongly supports this, because again, it just gives us the flexibility to do all the things that we know are economic drivers for Freeport, so thank you.
And we did receive a letter earlier today from Tony and FEDC. Anybody online?
Nope. We have people online, nobody has.
Nobody has raised their hand. All right, any other comments? All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Any discussion up here?
I just want to clarify a couple of points. They're easy ones. One, and feel free to correct me, Brett, or anybody if I'm wrong, nobody's taxes are going up if we extend the TIF. We're not giving any money to any developers or any other private parties. We're not giving any money to anybody.
Right.
We're not committing to doing that. If we don't pass the TIF, actually, taxes do go up a little bit, because we'll lose some tax benefit that we have from the TIF, and the monies that the TIF sets aside can be used for all sorts of things that council gets to decide, including multi-use paths or road reconstruction projects, as an example.
Yes.
So nothing I said there was incorrect?
Absolutely nothing was incorrect. You are spot on.
Is it also true that even though our action tonight is just a simple yes or no on the extension, that there's been a tremendous amount of work by our staff, by FEDC, tons of spreadsheets, tons of lawyers, lots of time in order to get us ready to take this vote?
So I've been here for almost two years, and I want to say council has touched this at least four or five times. Staff has made this a huge priority, and FEDC has ensured that this is in alignment with not just the downtown vision, but lots of economic priorities for the town. I would underscore, and you do a great job of like coming right down to the point, but I would just underscore that this is an opportunity, that if we don't do it now, we lose the increment, which means we lose the effective value of the TIF district, and that everything, when you read the program, the development program plan, it looks like there's everything but the kitchen sink in there, and that is absolutely intentional. What we wanted to do is give the Town Council, because the Town Council is the one that decides the priorities for tax increment financing dollars, and we wanted to give the Town Council the absolute maximum flexibility to use that in ways that best help the town of Freeport.
One thing, I was, I was reading the, the order that's attached to the agenda. The last section just says that the town manager is authorized, at your discretion from time to time, to make revisions to the documents related to the amendment. Can you talk a little bit more about what that could mean?
So in 25 years, I have never once made a revision on my own to the document. The only thing I could imagine is if there were something to comply with state law, because state law has changed, like a no-brainer, but even then, I have always gone back to councils, and I've always been advised by the attorney. So I don't know if that's a catch-all, to just make sure if there is something in here that needs to be changed in terms of language to comply out of what comes back from the Department of Community and Economic Development. So as long as it's substantially similar, we've used that language a lot. But in terms of any changes to the development plan, any changes to the TIF boundaries, any of those types of agreements, I've always been advised those need to come back to the Town Council. So I would think that that is there as a protection as we work through the back and forth with the state.
And since you're up here, can you just refresh our memory on the approval process and timeline from DECD?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked. So the deadline for approval is February. We've been working with Bernstein and Schur, and one of the leading TIF attorneys in the state, who has a good dialogue with the DECD staffer. We've done a lot of pre-work to understand eligibility and to develop and design this development program so that it's consistent with the state law. So we're in strong shape to get this in, you know, by the end of this week or early next, and then have two months for, for any back and forth that's necessary. But we're very confident that this is going to be well-received and that the state's going to turn it around pretty quickly. I think it'll be the, only the second extension like this, and the legislature, you know, created this unique opportunity to extend for additional 20 years with the original increment, because this is perfectly in line with the state's priorities around transportation, housing development, bike type facilities. So we're in good shape.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Sorry, I don't mean to pile on, but one more thing that's worth noting as I read through some of this. The TIF's been around for 30 years. When the TIF started, the lots covered by the TIF were either vacant or underused. So if I'm looking at the numbers right, back then, the TIF-covered area was worth about $8.5 million, and people paid property tax on that. Now, thanks in part to the TIF, those properties are worth $2.6 billion. So in my mind, that's the point of the TIF, right, to encourage that kind of development, and that's what we're teeing ourselves up to do over the next 20 years in the Village Corridor.
That's 100% true, and you'll recall, a couple meetings ago, we also brought forth an additional TIF idea that could create that new lever that you just described. So this is, we've been working on this for a while and been really thoughtful with a lot of input, to make sure that we're maximizing the flexibility for the town, but also leaving opportunities to continue, as we learn more through the Village Corridor Initiative, about the infrastructure that we need, as we learn more about the development that's coming to town, thanks to the policy updates that we're working on together, we can continue to lever this tool in a creative way that benefits the taxpayer.
Any other questions? Okay. Counselor Pilch, could you please read the be ordered?
I would be happy to. Be it ordered that the Town Council order adopting the Third Amendment to the Phase Two Desert Road Business Industrial Park/Downtown Freeport Municipal Tax Increment Financing District Development Program be approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, big step.
Thanks, guys.
Yeah, sometimes you want applause, you know? All right, so moving on to our next item is item 143-25. This is to set a public hearing for a cannabis establishment license. We have our town clerk, Chris Wolf, here to give us background.
I'm just going to do a brief refresher. This was actually the very first two licenses that we issued in Freeport for cultivation and manufacturing. They were initially issued to PETA Ingram as Maine Cannabis Exchange. Back in August, you approved the transfer of that license over to Britton Doeig, who is doing business as Taste Buds, and this is for the establishment at 1456 U.S. Route One. Britton's not here tonight, because this is just setting the public hearing, but I will let you know that he has passed all three of the approvals he needs, which is the police wire and code.
Any questions for Chris? All right. Counselor Brown, could you please read the be ordered?
Sure. Please, be it ordered that a public hearing be set for December 2nd, 2025, in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM, regarding a cannabis establishment license renewal for Britton Doeig, doing business as Taste Buds LLC, located at 1456 U.S. Route One.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Moving on to item 144-25, this is to set a public hearing to allow public comment on the extension of the paid parking moratorium.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. So just some background here. So the moratorium was voted into effect on September 16th, but it was retroactive to June 24th, which means it expires December 24th.
21st, actually.
21st, so not Christmas Eve.
Yep.
So our kind of working period there between when it was effective and when we actually voted in was, was kind of short, and we've been doing good work. On the 6th, we had our workshop around kind of the context of parking in Freeport, and I think we had a good discussion about long-term vision for parking in town, and this will just give us, we're asking for six more months, if we need it, to continue on the conversation. You can see sort of in, in the document provided, a little bit of background of what we have accomplished, what we have done.
Just to be clear, in order to extend a moratorium, you need to find that the situation still exists, which is in this language, and also you need to be able to document that you have made some effort. So you're not allowed to put a moratorium in place and then go off and do something else, and then just keep renewing it. So I worked with the town attorney to develop this language. It's pretty standard. I don't know if people have questions. I'm happy to try to answer them.
And this would also include sort of giving time for us to send, give direction to the plan. planning board, give them time to do what they have to, and have it come back to council.
So the, the plan is to have that discussion in other business next meeting?
Any other questions? Let me find my agenda. All right, Councilor Lawrence, could you please read the "Be it Ordered"?
Sure. Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for December 2nd, 2025 in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, starting at 6:00 PM regarding the extension of paid parking facility moratorium ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, moving on to item 145-25. This is to, in order to amend our collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freeport and the Freeport Police Benevolent Association. Sophie, I'll hand it over to you.
So as was discussed with the town council, when we were in executive session to adopt the initial contract earlier this year, the parties, the town and main association of police for expediency, had agreed on the first year's wages in the contract, but still needed time to kind of hammer out an agreement on years two and three of this three-year contract. We had made an agreement when you executed the contract that we would go back to the table in October and work that, the wages for years two and three. We met in executive session either one or two meetings ago, I've kind of lost track, where we went over the methodology for the wages that I am recommending to council that we adopt. And I provided you previously the access to the methodology, the Excel spreadsheet with the methodology for how we arrived at those numbers, as well as recently gave you the wage scale and the language of the side letter. So the way it works is all of our negotiations are done in executive session, which is why we had those conversations. If you have more questions or concerns, we should most definitely adjourn into an executive session to talk about that. Otherwise, once this is adopted, because the union has already agreed to this, so both parties either agree or not, and if everybody agrees, it becomes a public document, it gets executed, it becomes a public document, and the whole world can see it. If one party doesn't agree, then we go back to the table. We would have an executive session so you could tell me why you don't agree, so I can communicate that at the bargaining table. So that's the process. I hope I haven't muddied the waters, but that's kind of where we are.
So can councillors ask general questions about anything?
Process, you could absolutely ask process questions.
Okay. Any process questions? Any other questions that would require executive session? Councilor Sparta, please read the "Be it Ordered"?
Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to execute a side agreement?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, sir.
Tom's red lights.
Yeah.
Look at you.
It could happen. Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to execute a side agreement to the current collective bargaining agreement between the town of Freeport and the Freeport Police Benevolent Association that establishes the base pay scale for the contract year two, fiscal year 27, and year three fiscal year 28.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Okay, moving on to the next item, item 146-25. This is to authorize a letter of support for the Northern New England Passenger Rail Authority's grant funding application. Brett, take it away.
Thanks again, Brett Richardson, Development Director for the town. We're very lucky to have a train station in our downtown. We just talked a little bit about the Village Corridor Initiative and the Downtown Vision Plan, Comprehensive Plan. We had a great commentary from Mason Morfit about how our downtown's gonna rise like an Osprey. It's a huge asset, and to have a train that goes to Boston and connects is, is really valuable and makes Freeport unique. Our partners at NEPRA, who operate the Down Easter, are in the process of looking to improve their service and gain efficiencies by moving their station in Portland to the main line, the main CSX line. And that's gonna be important, because it'll shave 15 minutes per trip, which means that Freeport will pick up a sixth trip each day in our downtown, which increases the efficiency, increases the convenience, it's gonna boost ridership, and make it even more convenient for folks to access downtown Freeport. Or, as we develop, housing downtown for those residents to get to other areas in the region and live downtown and spend their money downtown. So it's a huge opportunity. And the Down Easter and NEPRA is out, they've been working since about 2020 on this plan. They've done a lot of legwork, a lot of due diligence, a lot of analysis to understand what their options are, what the benefits are for the regional stakeholders like Freeport, and how important this is. And they're in the process now of, of raising money. And what's good for the Down Easter is good for Freeport, and so we want to submit a letter in support of their efforts to make that happen.
I will just point out that there's no location specified. That's an ongoing conversation between the Down Easter and the city of Portland. I know GP COG is also involved. So this is a general support of relocation, but not necessarily to a specific location at this point, because we don't know what that is yet.
I also just want to clarify that as staff, we send out letters of support all of the time on behalf of the town of Freeport in ways that align with clear vision or direction from the town council, maybe not specific to the letter of support, but in general in our operations. This particular item is coming to you because we know there are ongoing conversations between the Down Easter and another municipality, and we want to be very careful how we use our voice while recognizing municipal home rule authority and not wanting to overstep. That is why we're bringing this back, to make sure that, that you are comfortable with the, the line that we've kind of drawn here.
Recalling when NEPRA was here just a few months ago and presenting the plan, I think it is a significant advantage to the riders to and from Freeport not to have to back onto the spur in Portland to get to the current Portland Transportation Center. Aside from the advantage to Portland of having people that much closer to downtown when they, they board and disembark the train, but I think particularly for riders from Brunswick and Freeport, it's a significant advantage for that tra, train to move to the main line, or that train station to move to the main line, to shorten that trip and then expand, expand the number of trips. So I'm in full support of that.
I'll say to that point that I've taken that train a number of times to Boston at 4:43 in the morning. So there's a big difference between 4:43 and 5 o'clock. So if we can get to 5 o'clock, because we can stay 15 minutes, I'm all for it.
Every minute counts at that hour. Councilor Pillsbury?
What happens if, I mean, this isn't likely, but it could be a scenario. We submit a letter of support and NEPRA can't come to resolution with the municipality they're negotiating with, and they come up with a plan to move it to an even worse location? How is our letter of support read at that point?
That's a good question, I mean...
If, if I could offer a thought, it, it's taken five years for them to get to a point where they've decided to analyze this. And what's new now from when, from July, when Patricia Quinn came and spoke, is that at, in July, the, the federal RFP that actually put money out to support the move hadn't been issued. It's now live, and there's now a ticking clock to submit to it. So I think the risk to submit a letter at this point in time on this opportunity, that that would bind the town to something in the further, in the future, is probably fairly unlikely.
There's language in the letter that talks about relocating the station to the main line, eliminating time-consuming train movements and all that, so there's some qualification in there.
And, and if it went to a worse place, I don't think they would move it. They're not being forced to move it, this is something that they want to do.
And it scores high within the federal cost benefit analysis, that gives them the basis to feel good about a proposal. Another location may not have that same good score.
So I would also say, we submit this letter of support, if they changed it and there was a massive change, we could submit a letter of concern. And for whatever good this is, the other one would have the same amount of good or bad, depending on how you look at it.
Any other questions? Okay, Councilor Pillsbury?
Be it ordered that the town manager be authorized to submit a letter in substantially similar form to the draft letter provided, supporting the Northern New England Passenger Rail Authority's application for grant funds related to the construction of a new train station.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to the next portion of our agenda, which is the public comment period, part two, for folks who are virtual. Do we have anybody?
We have.
It is wonderful to see that there's more than just Jim online.
But Jim is still there.
But Jim is still here, and nobody's raising their hand.
Okay. So we will go ahead and close public comment, we will move on to other business. First up, we have the, we have folks from FSAB here to discuss their report on the silver bullet recycling containers. A little bit of background, we had referred this to them to discuss as we were considering options for removal or alternatives for the silver bullets, so...
I am on getting your presentations.
That's okay. So your presentation will be up in a moment.
Oh, we're not gonna read off of that, though.
Do you want it up?
It doesn't have to be.
Oh.
Well, in that case, go for it.
Okay. Mandy McPherson, co-chair of the Freeport Sustainability Advisory Board. We submitted a report to you in PDF form last week, so you have that. And instead of going through it step by step, it is here on the, on the table for anybody who wants it and available online. We were just gonna give a synopsis, you know, short synopsis, so we could have more time if you have any questions or are there any comments. So in 2019, the town council made the decision to remove two of the four silver bullets, leaving Hunter Road and West Street. This was based on issues of contamination and multiple inefficient trips of uncompacted recycling down to EcoMaine. In 2025, we are facing similar issues, but now we also have dramatic cost increases for both waste and recycling. The analysis FSAB submitted to you includes research from 2025, along with our research from 2019 that had yet to be presented to you because we were redirected from waste and recycling to the Climate Action Plan. So now you have it all. Our recommendations are based on that research and from looking at Maine's solid waste management hierarchy. And the priority on that, the highest priority is to reduce, second is reuse, third is recycle, which was 36.76% of Maine's municipal solid waste in 2015. Fourth is compost. Fifth is processing and beneficial use, such as for manufacturing, construction, fill, fuel, and soil amendments. Number six is waste to energy. Over 27% of Maine's municipal solid waste was combusted in 2015, and the ash was landfilled, and that's what EcoMaine does with our waste. And landfill, which is the lowest priority for solid waste management. We also reviewed Freeport's solid waste ordinance and made notes in 2019. The stated purpose of that ordinance is to protect the health, safety, and general well-being of the citizens of Freeport, enhance and maintain the quality of the environment, conserve natural resources and prevent water and air pollution, reduce and stabilize solid waste disposal and recycling costs. Finally, in our submitted analysis, FSAB recommends, number one, updating the Freeport Solid Waste Ordinance, since it still lists four silver bullets and their locations. And we've also included notes from FSAB's 2019 analysis of the ordinance in Appendix A of our submitted report. And number two, retaining one silver bullet at West Street for one year to allow for educational campaigns to affect behavior change and to explore comprehensive solutions to municipal solid waste in Freeport. So that's it. Volly and I are here for any questions or comments that you might have.
We also have Rod here as well, who I think you wanted to present some information as a refresher. This would be a good time to do that. Thank you.
I'm just pulling up, he's got a...
Sophie, could you put that one slide up, please?
Is this the one you're looking for, Rod?
No, the next one. He's got a box in the upper left corner. There you go, okay. I'm Rod Brighere, I live in South Street. Thanks for the work that you all have been doing on this along the way. We're, we're certainly, you know, rowing in the same direction as a matter of just how, how hard we're, how hard, how fast we're gonna try to get there. This discussion started, I brought up this discussion in March during your budget discussion for this, for this current year. EcoMaine's costs are growing up, but the big change at EcoMaine is that six years ago, there is no tipping fee, that's the charge EcoMaine charges to accept waste or recycling and process it, and it's part of, those tipping fees are part of the, the budget, the revenue for EcoMaine's operations. In addition, then they sell recycling as they can, sell electricity that, from the turbines, from the, from the combustion of the, of the waste. But the tipping fees are an important part of EcoMaine's revenue. Six years ago, there was no tipping fee at EcoMaine for recyclables. This year, it's $85, MSW solid waste is a little over $100 right now. It's, I'm not on the board anymore, but I think the discussions, from what I heard, next year, the tipping fee for recyclables and solid waste is probably going to be parity. What I wanted to point out to you is that the, there's a vast difference in the efficiency and therefore the cost hauling recyclables with uncompacted silver bullets versus the compactor, or the compactor that operates up at the, the, the transfer station. There really are, I hope that if I talk like this, that I can still be heard. The important numbers here, this line right here, the number of hauls, there were about 100 hauls from the transfer station. The two silver bullets had over 400 hauls, and yet, oh, okay, thank you. There were about 100 hauls from the transfer station, almost 400 from the two silver bullets. And yet, the amount of waste that was hauled was about the same, a little bit less than the transfer station. But the, the, the compactor has about a, probably a three and a half to one reduction. The transportation cost on, on, uncompacted or not, is the same, it's $170 a load, or has been to go down there. So the, overall, this is a year ago, we paid a little less than $20,000 to haul the compacted silver bullets, or the, the compacted waste from the transfer station, a little less than $20,000. The two silver bullets were more like $70,000 for the, for the, for the transport alone. And the point for your budget is that the, we're spending a lot of money hauling air. If you look at the history of the recycling program here in Freeport, and from when the silver bullets were removed in, in 2019, basically, the, the, people who want to recycle figured out where to send it. And if they couldn't go to the two silver bullets that were clo- And if they couldn't go to the two silver bullets that were closed, then basically, that, that waste was, was repurposed, re-diverted, and it was pretty much evenly split, going to the, to the compactor at the transfer station, or between the two remaining silver bullets. If in fact, that pattern happens again, if in fact, two silver bullets were removed, and basically, most of that waste went to the compactor, we're talking about saving on the order of $50,000 a year for transport's costs. If you go through a stepwise process and keep one silver bullet, I'm not, the public works, and I have to figure this out, along with Reynolds, the company, because we're already taking about 250 loads a year, about, about a load each, each business day from West Street. And the, there's going to be, you know, some of, if in fact, the Hunter Road, it alone is cut down, or is removed, there's going to be some piece of that going to, to West Street. That's going to have to be figured out. But the, because, again, of, because the, the compactor at the transfer station makes solid, it makes recyclable transportation so much more efficient. If you remove one silver bullet, your budget line item is going to be $7,000 or $8,000. You're rid of both of them, and it's nominally a $50,000 savings for your budget. So it's the budget side that the, the budget question that led to the beginning of this discussion in March. The, so anyhow, if you have questions, I'm around to.
Is that hauling, that's just the hauling cost, right? That's not the tipping fees that we would, each load would now have a tipping fee on that, right?
Yes, that's correct. These, these numbers are just the hauling costs. There's, and again, if there is, there's about 750 tons of recyclables, and it's going to be about $60,000 this year for the, for the tipping fee, for the recyclables.
And is it 85 a ton, or 85 just?
Per ton.
Per ton.
Right. Tipping fees, solid waste, everything is handled by the ton.
If I can, because Rod so graciously recommended that I take his seat on the EcoMaine board, so I can report that the, currently, coming into the next fiscal year, the tip fee has been established for both recycling and solid waste at $110.75 per ton. We expect nominal increases to continue on the solid waste side, and a target goal over the next, I think it's three, two to three years, at a little over $135 a ton on the recycling side. So we are expecting to continue pretty significant increases of recycling, for recycling costs.
If I could step back and just, the, the, you don't have a lot of control over, over the various pieces of this. The, the big one is going to be the quantity of the tonnage that goes down there. And this is the point that I think, that I would encourage some kind of a community-wide conversation to actually reduce. And whether it is just awareness to people to, or, but particularly to start looking at, at organic waste. It's heavy, and rotten lettuce doesn't burn very well in the, in the incinerator at EcoMaine. There's, there'd be a huge advantage if in fact, there were to be a, a successful concerted effort to remove organics from, from our waste stream. Thank you.
Rod, just real quick, because I want to talk about that reduce piece, which Mandy brought up as well, as kind of the highest priority. And I'm wondering if you can talk briefly, we've, we've talked about it before, but the EPR plan, the Extended Producer Responsibility, which I think, in addition to, the goal is to help manufacturers of the packaging help pay for the recycling, but also, since they would have to pay for it, I think the effort is also for them to try to, for that to be an incentive for them to reduce the amount of packaging. But you shared with us before that the effects of that are still quite a ways off, and I don't know if you want to just give us the highlights of that again.
Sophie would be more updated than I am, but the, it's, the Extended Producer Responsibility, EPR, is basically a packaging parallel to the bottle bill, where, I just bought a new computer and new desktop, and the cardboard boxes and all the fiber material on the inside, there is a huge amount of waste, which will end up going to EcoMaine, and then the cardboard will be recycled and other cardboard. That cardboard box, we, as a community, are paying for my cardboard box to go down to EcoMaine. Extended Producer Responsibility shifts that responsibility, or some, some part of that, to the producer of the packaging in the first place. It's part of state law. It's, it's working its way through. The, the question is always, well, once, once these monies are collected, what's going to be returned to towns? No one knows, except it's not going to be very much. The, the biggest change will be if in fact, the reduction point, Eric, that you're talking about, the waste stream does change. EcoMaine is halfway finished building a new recycling separation facility. The old one is worn out, but the old one is also obsolete. Because when the old one was built over 20 years ago, the biggest single item in the waste stream was newsprint. And newsprint basically is not part of the waste stream anymore. There may be some kind of a parallel, society-wide response to having deposits, again, the Extended Producer Responsibility, actually changing the waste stream, which, fingers crossed, as you're suggesting, Eric, will be everybody's benefit.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I hope that you guys had an opportunity to read the report that we sent along. As you know, there's a ton of information there that we haven't verbally presented now. But one of the points that Rod made about composting is right at the center of our proposal. That's one of the reasons why we want to maintain the West Street silver bullet. But I also wanted to just bring this conversation a little bit broader than just dollars and cents. There's no arguing with the fact that it's costing the town money to send the recyclables down to EcoMaine. At some point, this becomes a question of the moral imperative. Do we want to recycle? Do we want to do our part to make sure that we don't continue to extract materials, raw materials from the earth, to just make more recyclables that are not processed at the facility? Because if you make it very inconvenient for residents to recycle, which you would if you were to remove the two silver bullets, you can expect a reduction in recycling rates in the town of Freeport. So even though it's very true that we pay to recycle, and the recycling, it's becoming more expensive, there are a lot of moral and social costs to not recycling. One of them is extraction. The other one is just there are all kinds of problems associated with landfills, which includes toxic materials being leached. It includes air pollution, water pollution, social justice. I mean, these landfills happen to be always located next to communities that are more disadvantaged. So I'm here to say, yes, I'm a resident of Freeport, and I pay, we all pay, we will pay more. Now, do we want to pay a little more and make sure that we still recycle? If you remove the two silver bullets, I think you more than likely will see a reduction. The past, we had four to two silver bullets. We still had two, and they're the two that are centrally located. So people still recycle. It's still convenient. If you're asking residents to go to the transfer station, during transfer station hours, to leave the recycling, it is more than likely that the rate of recycling in Freeport will drop. We're at about 30s, low 30s in recycling. The state of Maine has a goal of 50%. In Europe, they recycle 70% of their waste. We are way behind in terms of where the world is at on this. And we Americans generate way more than our share of waste than other people in other nations. So I'm just here to say, something to consider is not all cents and dollars. And we will absolutely devote a ton of our energy at FSAB, trying to educate people so that they can reduce first, and reuse, and recycle, and also compost. So that's, that's definitely super important to do, and we will do that. But we also ask that you don't just say, we don't need to leave a bullet, at least one bullet there, so that people can still continue with their habit of recycling. If people lose their habit, they're not coming back to it. And we know that that is the case with any habit that is a little difficult to follow through with. So hopefully, you will consider the cost, but not just the cost, and leave at least one silver bullet in place. Thank you.
Just going to bring it back really specific again, to the reuse, in terms of why we wanted to, why we suggested keeping one silver bullet. We recognize that there's costs in shipping that. But it's also, right downtown, we have a new environmental services person. We have a new communications person. There's a unique opportunity to use that as a place and a touchstone to educate the community. And it's a lot harder to bring them in somewhere, or to send out a newsletter, or, you know, any of the information we keep putting out to people on the list. And there's a place they're going to be going, you know? And maybe it gets full, and then they have to go to the transfer station. Things, behavioral change will happen, because things will happen there. The biggest problem is the boxes, right? Earl says that people don't break down their boxes. They put their recycling in plastic bags. I went, when we were working on this, I went down to Hunter Road, and right there, above the sign that says, "Do not bag your recyclables", I take a picture in there, and there's bagged recyclables. So those, the little signs, they're not always on the silver bullets. Even, we put a picture of our sign that we have on West Street, near the silver bullets. It's, it's not really engaging. It's not going to get people to read it. They're just going to keep doing their habits. So if you want to have an opportunity to educate them at the source, where they're actually thinking in this subject, and if it becomes a little friction and harder for them to do, maybe they buy things in different containers, or maybe they think about, you know, doing something differently, and that's our opportunity. So that's why we chose that one, and that's in our report. And then also talking about composting, and, and really playing up the education there. So, you know, we have a place that's a touchstone for that. So that's, that's why we chose West Street, and that's why we said, keep it for a year. We recognize that there's a cost, but there's also an educational component and engagement that needs to happen. And so we have a free place, in a way, to use that while we're paying that cost. And, and you don't have, it doesn't preclude you, if something goes awry, you could remove it, you know, at six months, eight months, nine months. But we set that year, just because we thought that would give a full cycle, and we could see what's going on, and, and see what happens. Because we don't even know what the exact movement of recycling to the transfer station will be yet. And, I mean, hopefully, a lot of people go there, and, and it doesn't change that much at West Street. So we'll see. So, any, any questions for us?
I have a question maybe for Sophie. I mean, it seems like what we've been hearing, and I understand sort of the moral imperative and the social costs, very much so. And I want to figure out how we can encourage and continue recycling efficiently. Because when I think, I think about, you know, like, containers of air being pulled by diesel trucks down to Portland, and it like crushes me. And that also, like, that creates a negative impact, the diesel trucks carrying air down to Portland. And it seems like the answer has always been, if we can compact, we can create much more efficiency. But the only way we can have a compactor is with staff and people supervising it, for very obvious reasons. Have we, maybe we have, and maybe we've already said we can't do it, but is there a way to create a system of bringing recycling from touchpoints in town to a compactor at the transfer station? And I'm sorry if we've already had this conversation. I don't recall.
No, we've, we've talked about it. We've talked about it with Earl. We also talked about it with an individual that we brought in to kind of, from the recycling world, to, to talk with us. The issue that we have, the idea of kind of moving the silver bullets over to the transfer station, is that the way the silver bullets are set up, and the way our compactor is set up, you actually have to kind of tip that on the ground, and then pick it up, and move it into the compactor. So that is not only labor-intensive, it is also, in the winter, in all of those places, you're introducing wet, which you don't want in recycling. So that, I think, is a really difficult one. I know there have been conversations about, could we create more manageable, like barrels that could be picked up and put in pickup trucks? Given the volume of what we're seeing, that becomes, I think, really unwieldy. And at that point, if we're going to be adding the costs associated with that, and the labor that would be needed, because right now, we are using essentially three full-time equivalent positions out at the landfill, to not only do the landfill work, but also, they come around and do the internal municipal work to take all of our stuff out there. So we, I, I am just nervous a little bit of adding components that have us moving in that direction. Because the direction that we had been moving operationally was to add hours to the four days that the landfill is open, and to also begin this cross-training effort so that we're able to use everybody kind of as public works people, so that when there are high times in one department, and lower times in another department, we're able to kind of move them. So we were trying to consolidate and find sustainability in terms of a supportable operational movement forward. So if we've, we've been kind of narrowing this way, if we want to open it up and, and add more manual stuff, it's going to require more staffing to do that, which comes at a much more significant cost to taxpayers than the $60,000 that, that we're, we're currently paying for transportation.
Yeah, it sort of seems like if we keep recycling outside of the compacting situation, we'll never be able to sort of solve for that.
Yeah, I think-
Parding air.
Yeah. I think there have been some really good points brought up about needing to bring some better flow out at the transfer facility to allow people to get in and out, to not require so much crossing, and the line to get so long. If you don't, if you really don't need to stop at the recycling bin, but we're stopping everybody because that's the line you take. So when we had the recycling person here, we did begin that conversation. It's going to be a longer conversation that Earl is kind of committed to have in the wintertime, when it's slower out there, and we can really get out and not hinder operations to sit and watch and plan.
I also want to add that Freeport has a very particular way of handling solid waste. We have a transfer station, which is a huge asset to the town. And people can go there to dispose of their waste and recycling. And then we have two haulers, private haulers, who actually go around town picking up. One of them is Pine Tree Gasella, and they pick up waste and recycling. If you pick up recycling in trucks, the trucks do have compactors. So any recycling that is picked up at the curbside is compacted before it goes to EcoMaine. The problem that we have is that the hauler, who has a much larger number of customers, only picks up waste and not recycling. So we're left with everybody who hires Jones for trash pickup, going either to the silver bullet or the transfer station to dispose of the recycling. But, I mean, we spend a lot of time thinking about, okay, how- But, I mean, we spent a lot of time thinking about, okay, how can we compact all this stuff outside of the transfer station? And we looked at a number of ways that you could do that. Yeah, and they were all very practical, like Sophia said. So we decided to look at other, just broader options too, which carry problems to, to solve. But if you wanted to consider a different way of compacting, compacting at the truck when it's picked up at the curb is another way. And you could do any number of things to arrive at that situation. And if you guys were interested, FSAB would be willing to engage in that conversation and do some deeper dive into other options that are not necessarily the transfer station. But we didn't wanna spend a lot of energy and time in something that you may not be interested in. But if you were interested in alternatives, FSAB is open to having those conversations and doing more studying on other things.
And to, and to clarify on that, those pine trees compacted loads are paid for by the individuals who hire them. Those, that transport to EcoMaine is not paid for by the town. So that's the individuals. And then, and then individuals can take their own trash to the transfer station. They pay, you know, their cost of getting it there. The other reason is that taking away the two at the same time, we, with all the crisscrossing people have talked about, kind of the situation at the transfer station, everything's gonna immediately go there. And there are certain days that are much busier there. Wednesdays and Thursdays, you know, they're very dead, they do the municipal rounds and stuff, and then it picks up Fridays and Saturdays. So it's, it's gonna be a big increase right there. So even with that opportunity, people will have the exact same questions that you had, you know, "Why aren't we doing this?" Or what, "Why are we getting rid of the silver bullets?" This gives us that opportunity with signage at the silver bullets to tell them why, to explain the costs and the fact that waste and recycling is gonna go up in cost for taxpayers. So they, it's imperative to actually reduce both the waste and the recycling. So there's that opportunity, and then you can kind of gauge what's happening with Earl at the, with, now I forget his name, the person at the transfer station, Suzanne's not there anymore, and, and see it, as opposed to it all just immediately showing up there. So that's another consideration we had in our-
And also, if you were interested in more comprehensive solutions to waste management, we would have a year to explore other options while people keep recycling and don't lose the practice of recycling.
I think one of the strategies of maintaining West Street, as a part of the discussion, was acknowledging that there's a composting setup there right now.
Right.
So, it leads me to ask the question of, who has knowledge, information about the effect of education? We know that the one hauler that does pick up recycling, I think we know this, that the level of contamination is surprisingly high.
Yes.
So, I mean, this is, there's so many moving parts to this, that it's hard to get your head wrapped around it. But maintaining the silver bullet on West Street with a ramped-up educational plan, which will affect the hauler that does recycle, maybe, but, but is there any sort of research knowledge about the effect of education in this particular area?
We did, after 2019, we hired an intern that was during the whole summer parked at the different silver bullets and helping people decide what was recyclable and what wasn't. And actually did make a change to, remember Mandy, what the recycling, the contamination rates, they went down considerably.
They went down, I don't know if we have that in the appendix, but it does talk about the intern there. So they, they did go down, and, and the pine tree was the most contaminated. And it, and it makes sense, it's sort of an away bin at your house, you know, you're not-
I mean, I could envision, for instance, the town negotiating, or, or just raising awareness of this company that makes a living collecting compost, having some satellites in North Freeport and, you know, other parts of the town, it would immediately strip out the lettuce.
And we don't have that education out there right now, where people know that that's a huge component of what the taxpayers are paying for with the waste. You know, we're paying for this, 30% of it is food waste that goes down there. So if that's diverted, that helps our tonnage, it's heavy.
Yeah.
So, that, that was part of the strategy. That all is together, that gives opportunities to talk about it holistically in terms of waste and recycling and compost. What is our waste stream? Yeah.
I have a compost bin that you can see from space, and I would reluctantly invite people, if they followed my training, to bring it to my house.
Oh.
But-
I, I use my backyard composter. I, I use my backyard composter that I got at the transfer station with the discount that, that they offer.
But I also want to say that I, I personally believe that the contamination rate went down considerably because there was a live person there helping people out. I mean, we've sent mailings around-
Yeah, that does-
And people don't usually respond that well. I mean, it's just another piece of paper that goes into the recycling bin, and then it goes back to EcoMaine. So, the reason why we wanted to keep at least this central, most central silver bullet at West Street is also so that we could have another intern, or we could have volunteers educating people on the composting bin and on the recycling side, because we think it makes a big difference to have a person there and not just getting a piece of paper in the mail.
Plus EcoMaine has new signage, I think Caroline had told us that. They're really, they're eager to work with us on this, they have a lot of new materials, you know, bigger than just what kind of is stuck on the side of the silver bullets, so, you know.
But it seems that the education works when it's right there.
Yeah.
You get 10 feet away, it's gone. I mean, that's, isn't that what we just had? You had someone for a whole summer, and they're not keeping track of the contamination rates now, I guess, right? Isn't that, is that what we-
Yes, they're not.
When was that intern, what year?
That was in 2019.
Yeah, it's been a while.
But if you look at the signage, the signage that's there now is really weak. There could be done, I mean, someone who works in design, there could be so much better signage, I have to tell you that, that so, there, there are lost opportunities right now.
Right, but it should have been done already if it's not, you know, we could do it.
Well, I think it stands to reason that these things, I mean, refreshers, right? Like, that's, that makes sense, it's been six years, it's probably time, new people are in town, people have left, yeah.
Yeah. But I also don't think that it drops off that precipitously if you take your day. I mean, it, it drops off a little bit, but it doesn't drop off, I mean, what I remember when we dropped the other two, the recycling at the, uh, um, transfer station went way up. We actually think we made money that year based on, on the recycling. So I, I know, I'm one with the bandit off, let's get it done, and I think, I think we should remove them. It's a convenience, and I don't think, we've, we've got the habit now, I don't think it's gonna go away that quickly.
Yeah. So, Councilor Smith, go ahead.
I, I just wanna thank you for all of the time that you put into this, and I also want to take responsibility as the one who asked the question in the middle of the budget conversation last year, that really sparked sort of policy action that was meant to be, that was really coming out of budget conversation, that, that sort of skipped over FSAB. And I appreciate the fact that you have jumped back in to really look at this earnestly again and bring us what I think is a reasonable compromise, as well as a step forward. And I think it offers budget savings on removing the West Street, sorry, removing the Hunter Road silver bullet, as well as a timeline for the West Street one. And I think that timeline gives us an opportunity, this one year gives us a couple of opportunities. One certainly is the education piece, and the other one is to evaluate the flow at the transfer station, because that also was one of my biggest concerns that we talked about when we were talking about removing the silver bullets, is that I was concerned that the transfer station, particularly on a Saturday, was not going to be able to handle the influx, because there's usually a line. And every few minutes, the compactor is busy compacting. So, so there is a bit of a, a time lag there. I would just say, I've, I like a lot of what you've said in terms of bigger signs, more engaging signs. I also think that signs are almost as limited as postcards and flyers, because if you've got a minute and a half that you have allotted to get this stuff out of your car and into that bin, you are not stopping to read the signs. And so, yes, having somebody there is really helpful. I think we've, we've acknowledged that a lot of the problems in terms of contamination also happen after hours, and some of that is sort of intentionally covert, and some of it is just lack of understanding. But I wanna go back to when the silver bullets were first introduced, and their, the community really engaged artists to help decorate the silver bullets. I'm wondering if there could be some engaging of the community to help with new signage, not necessarily on the silver bullets themselves, because those get swapped out and which one you're gonna get varies. But to think about how there could be maybe some other engagement that is fixed there for this year of education, if we, if we go that route, that doesn't require a person to be there, but it isn't just another sign. And I don't know what that looks like, but I think we have a lot of creative people that could help us figure that out.
I also wanna add my thanks. I feel like we sent you off on this errand to solve an enigma with no right answer, right? There's only different wrong answers, and we said, "Which is the least wrong?" Which is kind of how I think about the problem, right? I think my engineering background leads me to, "What's the most efficient way of doing it and why are we hauling empty air?" But then the other piece is, the, I think, if all I've talked about, it's cost versus convenience, right? So I think a lot of what we do as a town is not the cheapest, not the most efficient, not the most effective, but it's the right thing to do for a number of reasons, one of which is convenience, right? So we could say, "You have between 12 and 2 on Tuesdays and Wednesdays to renew your dog license," but we don't. We say, "Anytime Town Hall is open, we will staff it appropriately so that you can come and do that, because we know it's more convenient for our residents to do that." A number of years ago, I didn't have the time, as much time available to do recycling, and my family didn't. So we paid Casella $70 a month to say, "Pick up our trash and pick up our recycling." Now we have more time, we can navigate as at Hunter Road, as at West Street, as at Transfer Station. There are a lot of very, very busy people in Freeport who don't have the ability to spend every other Tuesday night in council chambers having these discussions, who just say, "Well, just make it easy for me and I'll do it." So I fear that the, the less convenient we make it for them, the less they'll do it, which you're acknowledging, right? Fewer people will recycle if we take more options away. A number of people will figure it out, some won't. So the question in my mind, yes, we may save $7,000 by removing one, we may save $50,000 by removing two. Is it the right thing to do? My anecdotal feedback from a handful of residents when this came up a couple of months ago is, "Wait, why, why would we remove silver bullets? It doesn't make any sense." From a common sense point of view, they, they don't get it until we talk through the 20 minutes it takes to explain why it is we're doing it. I mean, even then they're like, "Okay, I, I guess," but still, it's awkward. And the last thing I wanna bring up is that I found out that Hummingbird Lane, which is the houses that are not quite across from West Street, but, but in that vicinity, it's a multi-family development. They don't have the ability to have their recycling commercially hauled. So they can have someone come and pick up their waste, there is no option for them, for anybody to come and pick up recycling on-site. So they all go, the ones who recycle all go to West Street to do it. I assume it's the same for other multifamily complexes in town, where Casella will say, "Yeah, we'll come and, and pick up the bin, but we're not gonna deal with recycling. You're on your own for that." So they don't even have an option, so we're forcing all those people to, to go to the transfer station. So, I'm off on removing Hunter, Hunter Road, seeing how it goes. We have a number of things we wanna figure out as, as we do that over the next year. I would proceed very cautiously with any further action, but I understand why we're looking at it, and I'm all in favor of, what can we do for composting, curbside composting, more compost depots, whatever it takes. Like, there's tons of things we can do, and I love the fact that you guys are dedicated to doing it, so thank you.
And then on the multi-unit dwellers, the charter, the way it's written, "We as a town pay for the disposal of all the residential waste, but if you happen to live in a multi-unit dwelling, you don't get that right." So that's something that you guys may wanna look at too. I mean, the town doesn't pay for the waste for commercial, but it does for the schools, it does for nonprofits, it doesn't do that for multi-dwelling. So it's a little bit of a patchwork, and it makes me wonder why that was decided that way and who decided that, but you guys may wanna explore that, because it doesn't make much sense all the time. And, I mean, we as a town are paying for the RSU. I have kids in RSU, I'm all for the RSU, but I want you to know, we are paying for the trash that is generated in all the schools. Do you wanna do that? I mean, I'm comfortable doing that, but if you're trying to find some savings, I don't know. There are places that you can look that don't include, remove all the silver bullets.
Right, and that doesn't mean you have to have the multi-unit, you know, have them pay that, but you could, it could be required that multi-units have to have recycling and waste. So, you know, it's, I think it's bed and breakfast and three units or less that are considered residential right now, in the ordinance, and we've made notes on that.
And you could also require the schools to recycle and compost if you wanted to, because if, if they are composting, they generate a lot of wet waste, heavy. We pay for it. Maybe we pay for it, but they need to compost. Maybe a little pressure from the town wouldn't hurt.
All right. Any other thoughts? So I think, you know, I'd like to, I learned my lesson to not make a decision in other business when we brought this up the first time. So I think any decision we do make would have to go to a vote on a, a future agenda. I mean, what I'm hearing is there's certainly an appetite for education, that seemed to be well worth it in terms of the community outreach piece, and interest in considering removing one of them in tandem to the education. Am I on the right track?
Yeah, but why, why do we need to have the discussion all over again on an agenda item? This was on the agenda and it's-
To make a decision. Well, I mean, last time we made a decision to remove, or to make a decision about the silver bullets, it felt like the right thing to bring it to a vote. But if you're feeling otherwise-
I think there's been a lot more time and attention given to it, and it was publicly noticed tonight, so I don't mind, like, the timing is not terribly urgent, if we do it in another meeting, that's fine, I just don't wanna ask people to come and spend another two and a half hours waiting to talk about it and talking it through. If tonight's, when it's fresh in our minds and having the discussions, I'm, I'm comfortable taking action, but I defer to whatever you guys wanna do.
If we're comfortable, would you like to make a motion, Dan?
Do, yeah, if we need one.
I would like to vote, because-
Sure.
This was a, a very long process with a lot of discussion. I don't know if we have consensus either way, I would like to see a vote.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'll make the motion first, we removed both of them. Because even though it's a convenience, and your, your example was, we keep Town Hall open an extra, or we allow the dog, it doesn't cost the town a whole lot more to allow people to come in and pay for their dog licenses.
We could go down to one clerk and save a bunch of money, but we don't.
We could, but it's not just the dog licenses, it's, it's everything, right? So it's not costing $50,000 more a year to do this. And I know I'm looking at the numbers, but also, we burn our waste, we don't put it in, into a landfill. Even the stuff we have over ours goes down and gets burned. So, yes, it's a convenience, but I think, you know, when we brought them in, it was to make it more convenient so that people would get into the habit of recycling. We are now in the rehab, in the habit of recycling. We've been doing it for, I'm gonna say 40 years, at least trying to get everyone 40 years. That's a habit that's really hard to break. So, I appreciate all the work you did, I understand where you're coming from, but I think that it's time to take it off. As far as the transfer station goes- it's time to take it off. As far as the transfer station goes, I think we'll be able to figure it out.
So we have a motion on the table?
I'll second the motion.
Great. So this would be a motion to remove both silver bullets. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Motion fails.
So just to make sure we're legal, it was Sparta and Lawrence against and everybody else for?
Four.
Four, for the motion against. Did you get that? All right. Sorry. Continue on.
Can I make a motion that we remove one silver bullet?
Sorry.
Sorry. Are we just going to keep making motions until something sticks? Because it feels like, to me, I think Steve said it, you know, it's a, it's a problem that if we, if we, it's like whack-a-mole. You hit one, it's going to pop up someplace else. Like, I don't know, the intent was to reduce cost. And I don't necessarily know at this point that removing one of the, one or both of the silver bullets is actually going to reduce our costs in a meaningful way. Because it could, it could incur additional costs for hauling from the transfer station. It could, like, I just, I don't know what these, what our actions here are going to do in terms of costs that's static today. And so I don't know how to land on the question because rates are going up at EcoMaine for both waste and recycling. The transport costs have a fixed cost, but there's an environmental cost. We've heard from residents that if they have to drive, instead of going to West Street to the transfer station, it's additional vehicle miles traveled. There are all these factors that go into it. And I don't know, this isn't necessarily strictly an economic choice. This is, as Dan pointed out, it's a convenience and it's also a sort of social good issue. And we've been pitched by FSAB that there should be an educational component and we should try to be incentivizing composting. And I think those are meaningful paths to pursue. I don't know what changes to doing enhanced composting is going to cost the town or individual residents. And I just, and how do we evaluate the effects of an educational campaign or having an intern sit out by the silver bullet and change hearts and minds? And then how long does that last and what's the real impact? Like, it's hard to know because the field, the playing field keeps shifting in my mind. So I'm uncomfortable just sitting here saying, well, what's the motion that we're going to try this time? Like, I don't know if it moves us further down the field or not. And so I don't know if anybody else is struggling with that, but I, I just wanted to put that out there because I don't know, I want to make good decisions and I don't know that we're in a position to be able to do that right at this moment.
So you're saying, hold off, take a beat, do more?
But I don't know how we get to a more informed decision. So I'm offering that up as, how do we do that instead of just arbitrarily saying, remove one, remove two, remove zero?
I don't think it's being arbitrary, though. I mean...
So I want to try this. And I want to preface everything by saying, the level of service, which is what you're talking about, you're talking about reducing a level of service that we currently pay for, for the community, for a variety of reasons, right? That, that's the question on the table. The determination of the level of service is a council decision. It's a policy decision that impacts, has many different factors that go into it. I do want to bring your attention back to the spreadsheet that's at the end of FSAB's presentation, which is actually my spreadsheet, where we talked about assumptions of where waste would go and potential savings. And what it came to is when you think about potential avoided trips, if, if some of the waste came into the transfer station, I said 65% was, found its way into the transfer station, the rest of it made its way into the waste just because I felt like that was kind of what I was hearing from people. The savings is 50, we're talking about $50,000 a year.
For both silver bullets?
For, to remove both silver bullets. So when you say, we don't know what it might save us and we haven't done calculations, there's a whole spreadsheet there and I can share the Excel that will allow you to play with assumptions.
And I do want to just add to that, that's for the near future. Those costs will continue Continue to rise. Savings will continue to expand as fees increase.
Yep. So then the question that council needs to ask itself, which is not a staff question, is, is the good of recycling worth going from free to $50 a ton, to $85 a ton, to $135 a ton? Is that delta worth it? When it becomes more expensive to get rid of waste than to burn it, but when you burn it, let's be clear, there is still a landfill component when you burn trash. It not, it doesn't disappear. There is 10%, something in that neighborhood that needs to get landfilled of the volume. So there is work here that's been done. I would suggest that as a compromise or as an alternative idea, currently staff is trying to regulate and figure out where the hauling trips and the use align. One of the things we need to get the community comfortable with is the fact that a silver bullet with boxes that are below the level of the window by this much is not an overflowing silver bullet. There is still room in that silver bullet to put stuff in. That, so we have some education around that. So the less trips we take, the better. I am still collecting data from Reynolds on if we're not pulling them out as much, are we getting them fuller? Is there more weight? So that we can collect that data for you as well. FSAB is suggesting that they do more education and outreach. It's one of the reasons that, as I understand, we wanted FSAB was to be able to communicate to the community about these issues. So to maintain the status quo of staff trying to manage recycling or the silver bullets and the solid waste and the recycle, and the transfer station in the most efficient way we can, allow FSAB to take the next six months and do education and outreach, which puts them right about when you're doing your budget, and be able to report back what we see from data will give you, I think, the data points that you might be looking for. I will tell you that in all of the research that I've done about how to maximize recycling, what is the, you know, best practice for recycling programs, right off the bat, a recycling program that doesn't have a compactor and isn't supervised, those hit the two worse. Those are the two, that's one in two of reasons that they don't work. So I think ultimately, I don't know if you're going to get to this, you're not going to get to the same numbers as the transfer facility. However, I do, we are this far into the fiscal year, we are making some shifts. FSAB's saying they'll do education. That's one way to quantify it, if we look at our trips per, because the pictures were taken right now, even though we've put a lot of social media out about break up the boxes, we've used some pretty creative visuals for that. We have more signage that's going up from EcoMaine. We can't put our own signage on those silver bullets because we do not own them. They, they do not, we're not allowed to modify them. So another suggestion that had come in was to make the windows smaller, so it required people to have to break things up. We tried to do that. They will not let us modify them. Another suggestion was to shut, you know, to close them up a little bit more. Can't do that. So, you know, if you're concerned that you don't have the data, I'm the big one, right? If you don't feel like you have all the information, then we should do more to get you information. At the end of the day, I don't think you're ever going to get the finances where you can say, it makes great financial sense for Freeport to recycle. There might be other metrics where it makes good financial sense to recycle, but I don't think you're ever going to get the numbers to say this works great and is a savings. And so it really becomes this balance of public policy, which is 100% what we can afford versus what we want to do. Where is that sweet spot kind of with that? So my very long-winded way at nine, at 8:45 of saying, another option you have is to take FSAB up on their offer, to have staff continue to do the research that we're doing, but instead of waiting a whole year, get us into May or June of next year.
My number one concern, I mostly love this or support this, but educational outreach in the winter, I can imagine is not what we're looking for. I think a lot of what you do or your intern does is face to face, and we're not sticking somebody out in January all day doing that. So that's my one wrench here.
So, so would it...
And, well, the other thing about the education is you've got to be right there the whole time. You can't, because as soon as you get away from it, we're going to go back to the same way we did things. Some people won't, but you're going to have people moving into town that don't know. So it's an ongoing thing. So education's great, but while we have the two worst ways to recycle, and I get it, if you have no other way to recycle, I get having the silver bullets, but we do have another way, and that's going through the transfer station.
Counsel Sparta?
I'd also like to say that I think, assuming that the residents of Freeport are too lazy to drive to the transfer station, is not a great place to be starting. I've been driving to the transfer station for a long time. I personally have never waited in line. And I have a business where I have to pay to have my stuff recycled, and I pay extra if stuff's composted. I think the residents of the town of Freeport, and there's two fantastic examples right there, are excited to recycle. The people that are the bad actors, you know, we're not going to be able to do anything with them at the silver bullet. I, I don't think it's a lack of education at this point.
May I make one quick comment, just in terms of, of like, the downtown vision? And that plan is a walkable downtown? So that idea that maybe if, in these multi-units, if it's only picking up the trash, but that you could walk with your recycling to a silver bullet? And that doesn't mean that you have to keep them forever, but just that idea. And so maybe you are getting the new people coming to those that are getting that habit because they may not have another way to get.
I liked your plan actually of requiring recycling at those units. I think that actually would
Yeah.
Be a better solution.
So maybe that could happen while we have this interim, yeah, getting people in the practice.
I also want to just clarify that when we said that we expect to be a decrease in recycling rates, we weren't necessarily implying that people are lazy to go to the transfer station. We were implying that people have double jobs, kids, busy lives, the hours of the transfer station are limited. So this, we're not pointing fingers, we're not blaming anyone. We're just being realistic about how difficult life is for a lot of people and how busy they are.
Counsel Brown?
I've pinned a little bit on my hope for the effect of education. And the one thing that is different is we have actually an education person whose job it is to do education and communication in town. So that's one thing. But maybe an off-the-wall idea is, didn't we meet with someone who hangs out at the West Street?
Oh, yeah.
And I think I learned more than anything from this person who hung out, cleaned it up, observed, and taught us quite a bit. So it brings to mind the idea of volunteerism. But the kind of, but targeted volunteerism. In other words, people who are excited about maintaining recycling in Freeport could provide that service of educating people in a meaningful way. Just an idea.
Yeah. And I'm very much on board with, I mean, I think you have data that shows education worked. I don't know how long. I mean, there is definitely an expiration point where you have to redo it again. But I mean, if there's a concerted effort for that volunteerism, that education, more consistently than six years, let's say, then that could be a touch point of refreshing people's understanding.
But that didn't happen the last time.
The data showed that there was improved conditions.
Right. But the volunteerism and the continuing education, that didn't happen from 2019 to now. It still hasn't happened.
And I'd submit that it never was tried.
Right. Because we had to do the climate action plan instead. Yeah. So we were rerouted from that, where we were going, because we met with you about the silver bullets, removing two and then remaining the two. But then the, you know, once 2020 hit, we were working on the climate action plan.
Okay. So it's an either or, right? I mean, that's what I'm hearing. And so, well, okay. But I think we should pull them, and that's...
I think the other, this is the other thing, is that I think it's not just education and then you stop the education. And this is the whole point of the plan that they're proposing is that it's a transition, that it's an education until you get to whatever the next solution is, which may not be silver bullets.
We don't know yet. Yeah. So, still want to make a motion, Dan?
Yeah.
I, I think, as, we're getting late, you know, it's 9:50. I want to just make sure we have a place where Sophie and FSAB understands next steps. And I'm not sure we're quite there yet.
All right. Well, then I'll make the motion that we carry out their plan. Remove one of the silver bullets, keep the other one, and see how the education goes.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Were there no nays?
Anyone, I think that was everybody.
Everybody, yeah. The other thing I would like to add to that, maybe we put a metric on there that say, if this is what we are, we'll keep the bullet. And if it's not there, we don't have to have this discussion again because we did this when we removed the first two. And here we are talking about it again for the same reasons.
Right. And I think you're spot on. Because I think what we can't leave without discussing is, we can't just say we're doing it. We need the plan. So is that something that staff and FSAB can work together on? I think, Caroline, you're the staff person on FSAB, so that can be a discussion at the next FSAB meeting.
I don't want to get in trouble with Tom. So tomorrow night at FSAB, one of the agenda items is talking about education for the coming year. So I think the committee can have an initial discussion on education for the specific component, come up with a framework. And I'd say we'll commit to coming back to you with the plan by January. So, no? So you can know what they have planned.
With a metric on where do we go to stay, to keep it?
Yeah.
And what, what we don't?
January's fine. January's.
So we, and I think that's actually a good timing because that is when we get into thinking about our year.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that works.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you both very much for being here. And Rod, thank you for, you left the board and you continue to come.
I'll take education shifts.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to thank you because this is really, like you said, a problem with no easy solution.
Yeah.
So I appreciate all the comments. We've actually heard all those comments a million times over and we still can figure out. But I appreciate your willingness to try something.
And I don't, this isn't the end, so buckle up. But I think we're, we're working it out. We're having the conversations. Counsel Brown?
I just want to make a parting comment, that a request for sort of a brainstorming attitude towards volunteers, scouts, I don't know, some, some new way to think about pulling in volunteers for a very specific task, West Street, education, hour by hour, I don't know. It's crazy, but that's what brainstorming is, opening doors to new ways of thinking. So...
Thank you, Ken.
Perfect. Right. Bye, guys.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Have a great night. Okay. So we have two more items. That should be fairly quick. So the next item is, it's time to... time to review Sophie, annual review time. So I think last year's process went very well, all things considered. Ken, you're off the hook this time. I'm not going to ask you to, unless you would like to, but you don't have to. So last year, the process went where counselors had individually reviewed Sophie's performance, both qualitatively and quantitatively. We compiled that feedback. We held an executive session to review with council, and then a session to review with Sophie, which led to goal setting. Also, we had, we asked Sophie's direct reports to evaluate her as well. Any feedback on how last year went, or approval to continue on as we did? I see you thinking, Steve.
I was new, and it was thought-provoking. It was a great process. If it takes a little bit of time, then it's got to be good, maybe. I don't know. But I thought it was good.
Thank you. And I will say, Ken, I said you're off the hook, but you're still, I will be expecting you in executive sessions and giving input, so not completely off the hook.
Are you going back to John?
I'm going to ask John. I'll let him decide if he wants to engage or not. I have a feeling he probably will, knowing him. All right, so I will send out the timeline. We should discuss timeline, and then we'll send it out for, for input.
And then, will you be in touch with our HR director as well in terms of the department head piece?
Yes, so I've already flew Courtney in that we're ramping up to do it again, so she is looped in.
Okay. And I think the, my only piece of feedback would be in terms of getting that input from department heads. I think there were, we had almost everyone participate, and I don't know if there's a way to make sure that we get all of that information.
Yes.
I can't recall exactly what we were missing, but there was a hole there that I didn't...
They were anonymous, too, and we wanted to discuss if we liked that or not.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, so that will move forward. So we'll also ask the manager, because she just reminded me, of sort of a self-report of accomplishments and key learnings and, and draft goals. All right, and then the last item is just council committee and liaison appointments. So we just passed out the list of the current appointments. I just ask that folks send me, if they have any preferences, send me your preferences, I don't know, by next Tuesday? Is that realistic?
So that document has links in it, and you're going to say, how do I, how do I make that work? In your Teams folder, there is this document in PDF. So if you want to look at the links, you can just go into that Teams folder and click off. It's in files, and it's one of the loose files down at the bottom.
With your finger right now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You laugh.
Yeah. Also, wait like five years and you'll be able to do that.
If you have difficulty accessing your Teams folder, you have a choice of either calling Min and asking him to walk you through that, or bringing your stuff in, and he'll walk you through that. Or you can just shoot me an email, a text, or a call, and I will just send it to you separately.
And I just want to say, I'm, I'm, I'm assuming I'm the youngest person here, and I have asked Min for a lot of help, so everyone should feel comfortable doing so.
Are you saying something about aging computers? Is that what I'm hearing?
That was inside thought. All right, and with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're done.